Everybody, I call the York County Board of Commissioners meeting this first day of June, first hot day of June, to order. Once again, we are honored to have veteran Don Bradley with us to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we welcome back Sharon Gardner to lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh my God, oh my God, unite the hearts of thy servants and reveal to them thy great purpose. May they follow thy commandments and abide in thy law. Help them, oh God, in their endeavor, and grant them strength to serve thee. Oh God, leave them not to themselves, but guide their steps by the light of knowledge and cheer their hearts by thy love. Fairly thou art their helper and their Lord, vahawala.
Okay, if I could have a motion to approve the minutes from May 25th?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 25th, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'll open it up for any public comment. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items below for the office of children, youth, and families.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. On to new business.
I make a motion to approve a change order number three, final, with Deblin, Inc. of Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania, for additional stonework and concrete quantities at County Bridge Number 258, Slate Hill Road, over the Ella Breaches Creek in Fairview Township, York County, and Lower Allen Township, Cumberland County, increase the contract amount by $108,115.46, increasing the total sum to $2,435,643.16, and authorize the signature of the President Commissioner.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a contract between the County of York on behalf of the Human Services Department and Accenture LLP to provide the Avenue's software for use with training for a total cost of $184,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? We're really excited to be able to enter into an agreement with this company, and I don't know if folks recall, but at previous meeting, this, this training is being funded by several of our friends in the philanthropic community, so we're very grateful for them. If you're watching, thank you for, for supporting the county in this endeavor, and this is just another initiative to work and improve the efficiencies in our Children, Youth, and Families Department. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a change order number one between the County of York and JVI Group, Inc., for winter concrete curing and additional work for stone masonry found within a concrete abutment at Bridge 55, and final quantity adjustments at Bridges 89 and 273 as part of the York County Bridge Fundal Project at a total cost of $26,000, $27,908.48, increasing the contract sum to $1,899,708.73.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve and execute a cooperation agreement between the County of York and the Redevelopment Authority of the County of York for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grant for the following projects: Anayor Casa, York County Center, the Christmas Addict Association of York, Pennsylvania, the Susquehanna Heritage Corporation, and the Strand Capital Performing Arts Center.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, I know Kinetas with us today, did you want to share any comments?
Thank you, Commissioners, for considering this request. As you, I think, most, most of you know, and hopefully the public as well, the RACP program has really impacted York County tremendously, particularly for many of the nonprofit projects listed, listed in the motion today. So we're certainly excited to facilitate them through the Redevelopment Authority of the County of York, and certainly appreciate your consideration to serve as the host, in the capacity of, of entering into a host cooperation agreement.
And mark a county like, such as ours would be the grantee, right? Yes.
The, the Redevelopment Authority.
The Redevelopment Authority.
The Redevelopment Authority will serve as the grantee.
We're the host for it, and they do the submission of the work, right?
Any further questions?
No.
Discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve and execute a cooperation agreement between the County of York and York County Industrial Development Authority for the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grant for the following project, and it's a York County Library's capital project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
A similar request, this time the York County Industrial Development Authority will be serving as the grantee, and you may recall that this project was brought to you before, but the library system was fortunate to receive an additional award, so they'll be receiving a total of $5 million.
Great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the weekly disbursements for the week of June 1st, 2022, totaling $3,010,063.52.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a special allocation to South Central PA search and rescue in the amount of $14,000 for the purchase of a DJI Matrix M30T drone to aid in search and rescue operations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
And I know we had gone out and actually witnessed a training program with them a week or two ago, and I think they made a request for this, which would help them in their searches.
That's correct. They, this particular item is an all-weather drone, which would have helped aid them better in the search up at Pincho State Park, where they did find the gentleman. So, all in all, it's going to benefit all the residents of York County and a lot of the first responder groups out there.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, on to appointments.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Dorothy Yost to serve as a tax collector for Washington Township, effective July 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, congratulations to Dorothy.
I make a motion to approve the reappointment of Robert Gutwold, Vice Chairperson of the Maumpa Railroad Authority Board, for a four-year term, effective June 1st, 2022, through May 31st, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and congratulations, Robert. No executive session since our last meeting, any old business? Hearing none, we'll move on to other business, and we, our friends from CS Davidson are here today, John Kleindetz, to talk about a bridge award, and maybe give an update on the ribbon cutting yesterday.
Yeah, I'm going to cover the ribbon cutting, and Logan will cover the award. Just want to thank the Commissioners again for attending the ribbon cutting yesterday in probably the first really hot day of the year. It was pretty unbearable, but we did have for you a copy of the board that was at the site, which you can display to your content, but just as importantly, we had a representative there from the House of Representatives, actually Representative for, Representative Cheryl Delosier, who had a certificate of appreciation to both the counties. So, we said we'd grab it and bring it along to you and present it to you, and so at least the House of Representatives recognizes the work you did on that bridge. So, thanks again on the Slate Hill Road Bridge, I think it came out really nicely, and that was a special project, so.
Hold that up so folks watching could see. I think you got to turn.
I was going to say, what's the camera?
Can you get that?
I'll really foul up the cameraman.
The camera's back.
The cameras.
So I'll give you both of these, and you can do with it, and then Logan's going to cover one of the other.
Thank you.
My name is Logan Swartz, I manage the bridge group at CS Davidson, and you may remember, another ribbon cutting in the summer of 2020 was for the project, the whole, known as the Hall Drive Road Bridge Rehabilitation, or York County Bridge 226. So you will recall, this structure is also a historic bridge, built, the two spans were originally built at separate locations in 1896, and brought to the location on Hall Drive in Washington Township over the Bermudian Creek in around 1917. So this is certainly a unique structure, it's built by the Rod Iron Bridge Company of Canton, Ohio, a unique specimen of their work in central Pennsylvania here. So, CS Davidson was honored to be part of the project as the designer, and due to the uniqueness of the project, we submitted it to the Association for Bridge Construction and Design, the Susquehanna Chapter Awards Program, which evaluates projects on technical merit, context-sensitive solutions, innovation, and constructibility. And I'm honored to announce that the, the project won the award based on these merits, and I'd like to be able to present this plaque to all of you.
Awesome.
So, and I will also state, the, the project, Mike, Mike Pritchard was here last week talking about the tip, this project was on the tip and planned through the York County Planning Commission, and it was 100% federally funded through the, the tip program, so they're doing, continuing to do excellent work in the Planning Commission.
Fantastic. Can you show?
Hold that one up as well, yes.
The red one, yeah.
Excellent.
Did you get it? Okay, great, thanks.
I think it's important to point out, there's a lot of historical significance to a lot of these bridges in York County, and I think it was evident yesterday at the bridge we wrapped, the Historical Society was there, and had worked on a lot of bridges that got them on the register of them, so it's great.
Yeah, so the county has 90 bridges that we maintain, and the one yesterday at Slate Hill Road, nine of the 90 bridges we share with Cumberland County, so part of the bridges in York County, part of the bridges in Cumberland County, and yesterday the one was one of those nine, and it was really nice to also have folks from Cumberland County there represented as well, so, great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, on to, next item, on to other business, we have David Salinas here to give us an update on a, a project he is looking to receive LURDA for, and I will.
Good morning, Commissioners, thanks for taking time.
Sure.
Put me on the agenda this morning, so I'm with the developer, North Point Development, we're doing this project right up here, south of Canal Road, and just.
David, can you pull the mic closer to you?
Just east of Susquehanna Trail in Manchester Township. Today, on the agenda, we're just going to do a quick slideshow, just kind of talk about what North Point does, who we are, what we've done here in York County, in the township, and why, you know, this particular project is, is a really important one, but a really special one as well, and why the LURDA would be really valuable and, and applicable to this. So, I'm going to try to do this and not train wreck it, so bear with me. All right, I got it. So, real quick about who we are, number one developer, that's privately held, we don't answer to the 47th floor of a Manhattan high-rise, we answer to Kansas City. I actually am in the Chicago office, we have Chicag, we have offices in Chicago, St. Louis, Kansas City, Cincinnati, Sacramento, we're all over. So, part of what we've done here, just in York County, the old Harley-Davidson site on Arsenal and Eden, that was ours, we did a massive conversion of that brownfield into a post-cereal plant, they're going to hopefully be renewing and staying on a little bit longer term here. We're probably outside of the Kansas City market, this is the largest market for North Point, almost $4 billion of real capital has been invested in the Commonwealth, particularly the eastern part. York holds a personal relationship, I spend a lot of time here, I have a summer house, I'm just kidding, but we're here pretty much every week, so we do appreciate the warm welcome, we have a saying, capital goes where capitals welcome, York County and the affiliated townships within the county have all welcomed our capital investment here, so we appreciate it. This is the site plan of what's going to hopefully be built, starting next year, early 2023, it's about a $280 million investment, you know, catch up with me, maybe in January, it'll probably be over $300 million, inflation's killing us, it's tough for everybody, I mean, gas is nuts, everything costs more. So, again, this kind of goes back to the, to the economic viability of the project, and why LURDA is so critical. As an overall aside, the township has designated this back in, in April, but they've also participated. From a historical perspective, Manchester Township has not participated in any LURDA. I think we might be the first project that they've actively participated in since the statute was passed in the 70s. School Board, your, Central York School District also unanimously approved this, I know they had some, some budget issues and a teacher contract, when this project burns off LURDA for the school district alone, it'll throw off over $2 million every year in perpetuity. Right now, I think total, it's about $3,500 in taxes for the whole 250 acres. So, just a little bit of the economic impact and, and why these types of, of large-scale projects are so important, from an economic standpoint, $280 million, but it's also going to throw off jobs, you know, there's going to be 900-plus jobs of local tradesmen, skilled workers, that are going to be working on this project anywhere from 26 to 36, 24 to 36 months for full stabilization. There's also ancillary economic benefit with landscapers, the, the folks that run the sandwich shop that cater to all these tenants when they move into these million-foot buildings, so these are the types of things that really don't get captured, and they kind of get swept under the rug, but they're really important for small business. So, overall, you can see the wages, these are real dollars today, again, by the time this comes out of the ground and it's stabilized and open, these will probably be much higher. So here's the, the breakdown of what York County receives based off York County Assessment for the current 250 acres, it's $3,500 a year. After, we're at, we're seeking an eight-year declining schedule, we're, we're going to get rid of the last two years of the schedule. As you can see, it's almost pretty basic math, the difference between what we're getting today and what we'll future generate based off stabilization. So, that's kind of the dumb guy math, the way I look at it, we're not really smart, we're just developers, we draw rectangles on farm fields, so we leave it up to the assessors to kind of figure out the best way to generate that tax revenue for the county, but pretty basic stuff right there, it's a big project, and it's one we're really excited about. So, if we can walk back to the site plan, I'm going to point this out here really quick. This is just another building, this is actually going to be Northern York Regional's new headquarters, as part of it, we had excess land, we understood that they had an unfunded mandate with their current police station that was essentially functionally obsolete for what modern-day policing requirements dictate. We're going to donate a $5 million public life safety infrastructure to Northern York Regional, and we're also going to donate the land, which is probably about $4 million worth, so it will be a big selling point for tenants, a lot of these tenants that rent a 1.2 million square foot building, security is paramount, so we're also going to be borrowing off of Northern York Regional's fanciest guard shack in the world, essentially, so that's it, I'll shut up now, if you guys have any questions, happy to answer them, but if not, thank you so much for your time, really grateful for you taking some time today and listening to our pitch, so thank you. Sure.
Utilization of the land, is, is it farmland, or is it?
Just farm.
Okay, okay. And curious about the eight-year, and I know it's negotiable, and I think we've done other LURDA projects where maybe five years, or 10 years, or whatever, was that a negotiated process, or with the school district and the township, they decided eight years was the reasonable, or?
So, it's a great question, Commissioner Hoak, so what we've done is we just took what the school district was comfortable with giving, Tim Strickler is the, one of the finance chairs for Central York School District, his analysis said, look, we'll give it to you, but you got to cut off these last two years, and we've basically rubber-stamped that with, with the township, and for continuity purposes, we would be seeking the same one with the, with the county as well.
Okay. And did you say, just, are you building the facility for, donating the land and building the facility?
We're donating the land and we're donating the funds, they will actually undertake their construction, yeah, their, their own construction, it'll be a pad-ready site.
Okay, I wasn't sure when.
Yeah, and we have police chief last year, as well, has been a great community partner.
We'll be putting the building out for a bit, we'll be building the building, Buchard Horn is our architect for the facility. David and I met a year ago, maybe?
Yeah.
About this time, just happened to be the perfect opportunity for us, perfect opportunity for them, and we began this discussion early on about the possibility of a public-private partnership, which I fully encourage, and I saw earlier in the agenda, you approved one as well. You know, this is, this is a win-win for the 11 municipalities that we currently cover at Northern York County Regional Police, and the 88,000 residents that we provide police services for. So this is a, an opportunity for us to, again, move our department out of the 1990s, I think you all should have received the letter I sent in, you know, our current building is, was designed for 40 police officers in 1997, the last time we did any work to it, we're currently at 65 police officers, we have four female police officers, probably going to have another, a fifth here in the next month, and we don't have a female locker room, so we have real issues that we need to deal with, and David and his crew came into town at just the right of time to help us do that in a, a very cost-efficient manner for the residents that we serve.
Good, okay. And I guess maybe one or two other questions about, the, the three buildings, are they warehousing, or are they going to be, actually have different tenants in them?
Yeah, it's a great question, if I were to guess right now, I'd be wrong 100% of the time of the tenants that'll go in there, but with the, the big building, Building 2, that'll be a Fortune 50 company, those are your Targets, your Walmarts, you know, the big folks of the world. The smaller building, Building 1, all these buildings are built and designed to be subdivided, they're built for, for a long-term, so you might have a small manufacturer in there, you know, you might have some distribution center, you might have some, again, small manufacturing, but the vast majority of them would be, you know, geographical logistic distribution centers, or in the, I, it, everybody who lives in the Commonwealth, especially this part, has really won the lottery geographically for distribution centers, I know everybody says, I'm tired of looking at them, but you can reach 100 million people in an eight-hour drive time.
And that's what I was going to ask you, the question, when you showed the map, the allocation of resources to this specific part of Pennsylvania and our location, I didn't know whether it was because of 83 and 81, and, or the, well, we can touch within four hours, but, you know, it's, and you're explaining it right now.
Yeah, I-83 is, is a, is a critical pathway, it's a critical thoroughfare for any type of distribution, you know, from Baltimore all throughout the Northeast, and the other thing, too, this development is a big catalyst, there was a, one of the, Chris Durdo was with Pendot, that we worked with prior to him retiring, and he, we've all heard about interchange 26 coming, well, maybe these types of big developments, which are good planning, right on, you know, have your industrial zoning right on I-83, right on the major interstate, maybe this is the catalyst to finally.
You're talking about Canal Road?
To finally get the interchange to come to fruition here in the next decade.
I know you've been talking about it for a long time.
Long time, long time, since 1991, so that's, if you go on the other side, this building up here, that was Starbucks Distribution Center, and they were saying relocate here, we'll build you an interchange, you'll have direct access to 83. So, maybe one day soon, but these types of developments, they are the ones that demand the infrastructure to be improved, which is, you know, it's a big investment, but there's a lot of ways to pay for it long-term, you know, with, with just the revenue generation off taxes alone.
And I think you said that all the land is in Manchester Township?
There is all in Manchester Township, except for the northeastern portion, which is now Bear Road, that's actually an East Manchester Township that we've been working with, Board Supervisors President Steve Gross and his team over there, they've been really helpful with facilitating any work we need with them.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? All right, thanks, David.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Chief Flash. Okay. Okay, I will open it up for any public comment. If I could have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and we will move on to Salary Board.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 25th, 2022 Salary Board Meeting as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, I'll open it up for public comment. Hearing none, we'll move on to motions.
I make a motion to approve the positions, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collective bargaining agreements, or as set forth in York County Employee Handbook or York County Policy Manual for the following departments and roll offices, as stated below, with no additional benefits or concessions, thus otherwise noted, and there is listed in the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, if I could have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, we're just going to pause, I know we have a little more lengthier Retirement Board meeting, because our friend's here today, so we're just going to pause and get a photo for the bridges, real quick, so just bear with us. Sorry, Greg, I just didn't want to. Okay, thanks, everyone. So I'll call the Retirement Board, June 1st, to order. If I could have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting held on May 25th, 2022, as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, I'll open it up for any public comment. Hearing none, we'll move on to Lee. Lee, do you have this on a?
I don't, I have it electronically, if I can email it. Should I do that now?
I've got it.
Okay, he put it on the computer.
Well, I think you have the, you have the long one.
He has the short one.
Are you able to put that on, or?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Actually, I, I can send you the shorter version, that is the print version, right now.
How's the market been lately?
Yes, sorry, I sent the long one, I didn't send the shorter one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Lee, if you want to start.
I can start on the markets. Well, may, maybe we can do the market environment, and then.
Yeah.
Then we should be up by the time we get on to the performance of the portfolio. Okay, so if you take, if you take, take the book and go to tab 2, Market Environment, page 10, and obviously, the big, the bigger information that the boards are really wanting to, to discuss, obviously, right now anyway, is more kind of the markets, where we're going, you know, with inflation here, supply chain issues, and, and obviously then the big one to kind of impact that is where is the Fed going with their rate increase, rate increases, so. So, but just to give a bit of color on Q1 first, on page 10, as you can see, after a really strong fourth quarter last year, GDP did contract 1.4% in the first quarter, and that was significantly below what the economists were expecting. And even though consumer spending was strong, the net impact, negative impact from just net exports. As you can see, after a really strong fourth quarter last year, GDP did contract 1.4% in the first quarter. And that was significantly below what the economists were expecting. And even though consumer spending was strong, the net impact, negative impact from just net exports as the dollar rose with rates going up, but also just the private inventory investment, that slowed down considerably from the back end of last year. And that was really due to, you know, businesses kind of built out the back end of last year. Their inventories again, expecting us to fully open up. But we really haven't been able to because of supply chain issues. And also, the supply chain issues are causing good parts, prices and goods to go up. And therefore, you know, they're really slowing down their build-out because it's costing them a lot more. There we go. That's the one. So expectations are. Are we doing it from there?
Dylan.
Oh, okay. Just while you're pulling that up. Expectations are that growth will. Well, there we go.
What page did I go to, Lee?
So, yeah, it's page 10 of the, so I don't know what PDF number that is.
I would just keep going.
Okay, let me keep going. Yeah, yeah. So, expectations are growth should start to improve again later in the year. Just a couple more pages. There we go. I'm at the bottom of this page. But obviously, the, you know, our thoughts are, you know, this could be a very slow growth, if any growth at all, environment for the next 12 to 18 months. Because there's just a myriad of issues out there. The Russia-Ukraine war being one, which is really impacting food and energy prices around the world, which, you know, is a big driver of the inflation we're seeing there. And then obviously, the zero COVID policy in China, with then closing down like big cities like Shanghai. The number of goods that come through these ports and cities is just tremendous. And obviously, that's impacting inflation as well as prices arising because you all know, simple supply-demand from economics. So combination of those are really, have caused inflation to be the main issue this year. So the Fed has really turned kind of hawkish on it. We did get a 50 basis point rate increase last month. Expectations and priced into the market, as you can see at the bottom right-hand graphic there, expectations are you're going to get a 50 basis point increase this month and next month as well. And they're kind of priced into the market. Now, the Fed did speak at the last meeting about potentially another four rate hikes that will follow that. But our thought is now at this point, because they're really, really on a tight rope here. They want to impact inflation and bring it down, but at the same time not tip us into a recession. And I think before they continue with any other additional rate increases, I think it's really going to become more data-driven, data-dependent on whether the economy will stand there. Because, you know, there's parts of the curve right now that are inverted. And potentially, we could go into a recession next year. Am I able to move these up?
Why don't I just let?
Oh, was that me or was that you?
I, well, go ahead.
Oh, great. Perfect. So I've got it now. Thank you. So just quickly, on the next page, as we see at the bottom here, just quickly at the bottom chart, what you see there is, before the COVID spike a couple of years ago, we were really coming to the end of one of the longest bull, market bull runs that we've seen in history. As you can see there, about a 14-year, 13-year kind of run. And then COVID came along and we threw everything out, the kitchen sink and money. And all that did was really just spike the economy for just a 12-month period. Well, more importantly, the markets, not the economy. And now what we're seeing is we're basically retreating back to where we were a couple of years ago before COVID, very quickly here. So as I say, we were coming to the end. We were very much in a late cycle anyway. And that is kind of where we're coming back to at this point. I won't talk globally. As you know, this is global phenomenon completely around the world. Obviously, Europe are struggling now because there's so much of their economy is linked to Russian energy and food and Ukrainian wheat. And then obviously, in China, we talked about the zero COVID policy there, which is really took their country back several years, you know, from a growth point of view. And you'll see that finally on this last page here, on page 13, as we look at the index returns for the quarter. As you can see, stocks were down just a little over 5%. Emerging markets were a little worse. And that's predominantly due to China. And China's a third of that index. So where China goes, where the index go, China goes, kind of is where emerging markets go. But the real big outlier for the quarter, if you see core bonds down 5.9%, when equities are down, it's not often that you see safe bonds down at the same time. There's only been a few quarters where you've seen that in the past. And actually, if you look at core bonds for the year, end of April, we're down nearly 10%. Now, you're going to see shortly, your fixed income was down a lot less than that, only about 6.5% because you're the intermediate of cred. So you're a little shorter duration than the core bonds. And as rates go up, the longer duration bonds are the ones that are more negatively impacted from a return point of view. Bank loans, you can see, is one positive area of fixed income. Think of that as kind of your proxy for the private credit. So when you look at your private credit, positive results, you know, that's on the back of the floating rate nature of the loans. So they're not impacted as rates rise. So that was a good move last year for you getting in the private credit. And then finally, the big story of the year has obviously been the inflation-sensitive assets. As you can see at the bottom there, TIPS down 3%. So they were handling, outperformed core bonds. Commodities has been the real story of the year. As we've seen, oil come back and precious metals, as you can see, nearly 50%. They've been up for the past year. But remember, it was a couple of years ago, we were sitting there and they had to pay people to take oil off your hands. So this, again, as I said, is just a reaction to what we gave away two years ago. We're kind of paying for now. And that was actually the last, the only segment of the market that was positive last quarter was energy up nearly 40%. And actually, utilities a little bit. So you'll see shortly here, your infrastructure was positive too for the quarter. But everything else you can see has been negative so far this year. So that's the markets. Any questions on the markets? If not, we can go and talk about your portfolio. So the next tab, page 20 there. As you can see, you finished the quarter at about 525 million. You were down 3% for the quarter. But as expected, because you were a little more defensive-minded, you did outperform your benchmark by about 40 basis points. And because of the diversification of your pool, you're actually in the top decile, top 10% of all pension funds in the U.S. for the quarter.
But before March 31st, we were down a lot more, right, or not? I mean, did we get these reports?
This is every March. And now I'm going to give you, I have an update in the book through April as well. So obviously, April was down.
Yep.
And the beginning part of May was down as well. And we started to see last week a little bit of recoveries. Equity markets went. We're not being as impacted by yield moves in the bond market. So it kind of suggests you're kind of bouncing along some kind of bottom now. So, yeah, actually, through, in April, you were, you know, you're obviously down. You're a little under 500 million, as you sit here now today. But you're, as you're going down, you're not going down less. So even before you factor in all your privacy, real estate, et cetera, you were still 30 basis points ahead in April and likely will be in May as well, just from your structure. So what worked well for you was your higher quality position on the equity side, you tilt the value. And then everything you've done the last few years with diversification, such as all your real assets. As inflation goes up, they tend to be linked to inflation. So as you'll see shortly, positive returns from your real estate, from your infrastructure, from your timber, from your farmland. And then likewise, your private equity and private credit are posting positive returns because they're not impacted by the daily movements in the markets. What didn't work as well was outside of the emerging markets was more of your growth positions in your portfolio. But they helped your performance in the past. And as you can see there, the past five years, you've had some great, strong performance. So the key there, when you look to do your funding and you look to run your actuarial analysis, remember, the past five years, you take 20% of the gains and losses. So, and that is kind of goes to for your actuarial value. And as you can see here, because you've had such great, strong gains over the past five years, you've gotten a lot of gains that you can utilize in future years here to help offset potentially a negative year like we're possibly probably going to get this year. So, so just to say, you know, no one ever likes to see funds go down. But the good news is you've done some great performance the past few years. That's going to help offset a couple of bad years in the future. And then just finally, you did have some recent activity there with IFM. Your Infra did funding Q1 as well, in addition to JP Morgan there. That was obviously great timing for you and the additional call for your private credit, too. This is, next page is just, you can see your flows and you can see your returns just quickly off this. And this is, if you look at your three-year number, you're about right on bench now. But remembering 2020, when all the companies that were losing money were the ones that were doing really well, you were lagging in that environment. But as you see now, where more normalizes came back to the markets and fundamentals mattered again over the past year, you know, you were 100 basis points ahead. And as I say, last quarter and now year-to-date this year, even in April, you're ahead in these downturns. So when the market, remember, when the markets are really racing, you probably would lag a little in that environment, but you're not so concerned because that'll be above your assumed rate of return, as we saw in 2020. But now it's going down the other way. You don't want to be down as much again. And that's ideally what you want to do is hit that assumed rate of return every year. This is the reason why your highs are not as high now, your lows are not as low, your volatility is not as high. It's just your diversification, not only at the asset class level there. You've got equities, global equities, international. You've got the VRP defensive equity there. Real estate, infrastructure, timberland, private equity, private credit, fixed income. And within those, you have a lot of multi-managers as well. So you've got a lot of diversification. So your volatility has dropped an awful lot over recent years. This next page just compares you to all the over 1,500 defined benefit plans here in the U.S. And as you can see, for the past year, in the 12th percentile, you've done really great performance. And long-term even, you know, well above median. So very good relative to defined benefit plans, too. But here's another actually story for you for the diversification work you've done as a board. Look at the one-year number, your total fund 7.3. If you just indexed that 65.35, you would have only been up 2.7% if you just did equities and bonds, like a lot of the other counties are. So that just shows that extra impact of all the diversification you've done, that's been added accretive to that. So. And then, as I said, now, unlike a couple of years ago when I was here, that little red square was to the right. It was capturing more down market. Your volatility was higher. You're now a lot lower than the benchmark, again, because of all the recent things you've done more over the past year. And then just finish up for you on the managers here on page 27. As you can see, we talked total funds. So U.S. equity, that you're only down 4.3% when the market was down 5.3%. And for the one year, you're nearly 2% ahead. And that's really come from Ernest and more the defensive nature of Twin. Twin, you'll see, was just on bench for the three months. But in April, they were 2.5%, over 2.5% ahead. Now, that kind of, the reason you kept them in there was for these big sell-offs, the big blue-chip defensive stocks they hold are the ones that are really holding up well for you now. And Ernest has just crushed it for you, you know, over the past 15 years. I mean, they're last, over 8% above the index last year. On the global side, you're pretty much on index for the quarter. Did lag a little for the year. Your value manager, value was ahead. So you can see Dodge and Cox was well ahead. And the low Vol, obviously, is now really playing well for you. You can see MFS, down 2.7%, was quite a bit better than the Aqui down 5.4%. But then your growth managers, obviously, then they lagged them benchmarks, Artisan and AB. But they're the funds that did really well in 2020 when growth was at play. On the international side, pretty much on index for the quarter. Little lag for the year. That was emerging markets that dragged that down. The value too, from the Schroders, has been accretive for you over the past year. But some of the emerging markets has been a bit of a headwind there. But this quarter, actually, emerging markets is actually leading significantly over developed world. Defensive equities, you can see, pretty much on bench for the quarter, about 2% ahead for the year. And then from there on, we get into your real assets. So the key here is a positive return in real estate, up 7% for the quarter when stocks and bonds were down. And then for the year, I mean, a year ago, we were talking about the end of the real estate world. You guys have posted nearly 30% in private real estate over that period. And some of that is the moves going away from JP Morgan, away from the older kind of office and retail-based funds, moving to the smaller, more nimble Clarion and TA. And you can see TA for the year, over 10% ahead. So that was great, that we're able to get you into that fund pretty much inception. Infra, as I say, one-year number, up 8.8%, nearly double the bench. And again, for the quarter, was positive when stocks and bonds were down. Similarly, Timberland, as you can see, nearly 10% for the year. And for the quarter, again, was positive when stocks and bonds were down. Private equity, again, because you have that open-ended partners there, you're getting return right from the get-go. In fact, in just over a year, you made 19% there already in private equity. And then in your private credit, you can see, only got in towards the end of last year, but already positive when bond prices are going down. And that's been accretive to your portfolio.
So, Lee, question for you. So it looks like for the private equity, that a policy says that roughly 3% is in there, but we're running at 4%? Am I interpreting that correctly?
Currently, because these are not marked down, the other equities are. So you're a little over-allocated at the end of the quarter to private equity, but then underweighted a little bit on the total. So we factor that into your overall equity, whether it be private or target, yeah. But there's no more, the calls are in there now. And what you will be doing is selling some of that partners down at some point and bringing it in. But, yeah, we keep our eye on that, on those weekly charts to make sure they don't go too far out of sync. And actually, your private credit is under by one to offset that as well. And then fixed income, as you can see, as I said, you know, the ag bond has been down quite a lot. It was down nearly 6% for the quarter. As you can say, you're only down about 4%. And for the year, you know, you're about 80 basis points better off. And that really came from your shortage duration, high yield and Mstone and Lord Abbott. The shorter the duration there, as rates are going up, they're obviously going to be more accretive to your return. So you have a lot going on in your portfolio. But it all seems to be working as you designed to kind of protect in these sell-offs. Any questions on the pension fund? Okay, maybe I'll just quickly do the one-page observations like we normally do for the OPEB and the 457. So if I'm on page, sorry, wrong way, 32 here. So you can see, you finished the quarter with the OPEB at 41 million. Pretty much on bench for the quarter, down 4. And then you were ahead about 25 basis points in April that you'll see from the update. You're going to look more like the benchmark on the OPEB because you don't have as much in the diversifying assets because it's a smaller fund. So this is really, and you have less issue with volatility in this fund because it is a long-term fund where you leave money in rather than having to take money out like you do for the pension fund. So it can be a more kind of risk-on type pool. Peer ranking, again, above median for the quarter. Peer ranking, again, above median for the quarter. Similar kind of attribution here, the value tilt, the higher-quality equities. You do have some real estate and infrastructure in this fund, and you can see that was, uh, obviously accretive for the quarter. Again, the, the, the headwinds were the growth equities in the emerging markets. And then longer term, you know, the good news here for this fund, again, you, you've been getting, uh, over 8.5% a year, again, above median. And, um, and gained over 10 million, which, you know, as you've heard me say many times, it's 10 million that you didn't have to go and find from your general, general fund, so.
Mark, refresh my memory, when, when did we start this fund, 2018?
Eight, eight, 17, August.
2017, 2018? And what was our initial investment?
So.
The, the sale of the nursing, right, okay. I knew we, I just couldn't remember, I knew we started, but I, okay. So we started 2017, then we funded it when we sold it, all right, all right.
Yes, there's been about 23 net cash flow going.
You'd be shocked to know how many of our friends are on page you go for this, they have not done anything. I mean, over, over 50% of the progressive counties have nothing.
Right.
Yeah, so that, and there's all your flows that you can see there. So everything's in compliance, you know, a lot of the funds overlap, um, with what you have in the pension fund, so I know in the benefit of time, I won't stand that too much. The, um, there was potentially a talk of, of cash flow activity in this quarter. Is that a?
What do you mean, as far as?
Was you going to ma- make a contribution to the OPEB? I'll take it, yeah. Okay, um, so that, I mean, um, it's always good when, when you, when you only make lumpy contributions, if it comes at a time after markets are sold off, it's always a good time to do it. Rather than put it in before, sometimes you get lucky on your timing, too. Now, it's not the same markets, they're not going to go racing up again anytime soon. But it's, at least it's good to know, you know, you're, you're buying in after we've had a good correction. So that's OPEB, anything on the OPEB fund? If not, I'm just going to quickly go through this, and we'll finish on the 457 here, page 42. And really, yeah, for, for counties, the past couple of years, it's been tough from an engagement point of view, obviously with COVID restrictions and getting people out to meet and, and education and stuff. But your fund continues to be part, participant trends look good. As you can see here, your participant rate every quarter is, is increasing, you know, uh, which I've not seen actually at a lot of other county funds. So, uh, so it's good to see you have increasing participation rate. Increasing as well, deferral rates going up to about 7.1% now. So folks are putting more away into this fund now, too. Uh, seven of your, your funds outperformed benchmarks for the quarter. We do have one fund that, that is coming in, we had to get onto the Empower platform, so it did stall a bit, which is the Kane Anderson one, but it's if not this month, we do expect that, um, in early Q3, you would finally rotate into that. That's one that we talked with Holly about last year, about just replacing the smaller mid-growth manager you have now with that fund. Uh, about two-thirds, actually, yeah, exactly, two-thirds of your, of your employees are in the low-cost target date funds, which have now reduced their fees down another basis point, uh, which is great. And, and those that are going it alone, I, I always like to look at, you know, how are they investing, and it's a good mix of passive and active, that's about 50/50. And your equity to fix, the, the two-thirds, one-third, is about exactly that you would say would be prudent for the average age of 50-year person, which is what you have here now, so. So I think the education that the employees are getting is good, and the decisions are, are making appear to be good from an asset allocation, uh, point of view, which is nice to see.
Yeah, we just started those, uh, financial wellness programs again, and they're great participation.
And we have some study programs now, but I guess, one question maybe for you, you, Lee, is you hear on, whether it's on the TV or financial advisor, saying that people near retirement age, you know, obviously, the market fluctuations daily affect their accounts they look at. Younger people, it's always the stay the course, you know, and not make financial decisions. So I guess in, in our fund, most of the people are in the passive that it is controlled by target dates and stuff, okay, I just, yeah.
As they get closer to retirement, it gets more concerned.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, I, I did include these slides in it for your target date funds. If you go to page 49, uh, and you can see how the allocation changes over time with, with those funds. So obviously, the younger folks who'll go into the 2060, they're going to be pretty much all equities at that point.
Right, right.
But then as you, as you, you kind of glide out over time as you go down there. And, and the good thing is fiduciaryism, I'm a fiduciary along with, along with the retirement board here. It's this final page on 51 here, you can see, from a performance point of view, the Vanguard funds have always been kind of above medium in that second quartile, which you would expect when you're passive, you know, you're, you're not going to be top, you're probably not going to be bottom, these are passive kind of target dates. But again, above median, which is great. And then the expense ratio, you know, the best out there, they're right at the top, so. I think, uh, so from a fiduciary lineup point of view, I think you guys have done a good job on that, uh, for the employees. Wish I could have access to them funds, but I can't. We, we don't have enough money in our, our 401K. So that's it. Again, apologies upfront on that, and I sent you the wrong report, the, the big full one. I forgot to send the small one that be, be lifted up, but I'll make sure you get that in future. And I'll make sure I'll have a backup on my, uh, you guys can put a, uh, yeah, a drive in, thumb drive, that's it.
Yeah, great, that would be very helpful, thank you. Any more, any questions for Lee? Thanks so much. Executive sessions from last time? I'll open it up again for public comment. If I could have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of adjourned, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for watching, and enjoy the day.